That is our last question. By the way, on the Video Lottery issue, the chairs that we have up here on the stage, I borrowed out of the casino. I just feel you're better us than them. So... (Applause) Will you join me in thanking our council members? How's your school board members come forward? Our school board members are coming forward right now, and we're going to remove a couple chairs here offstage. And so we're just gonna do a little change up here. Okay, we have two other school board members. Please come up, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna begin with Ward 1. Ward 1, there are two running for Rapid City School Board in Area 1. Incumbent Matt Stevens and challenger Rick Crevel. Gentlemen, would you kindly take to each podium, please? We'll follow the same format as the last forum with the city council members. So we begin with the opening statements, and we'll go to our incumbent, Matt Stevens.
Thank you. My name's Matt Stevens. I'm an attorney here in town. Born and raised in Rapid City. Much like Mr. Decore, I grew up on the north side. Kind of an interesting story. I grew up across the street from Nobod Elementary. And some almost 47 years later now, I have a lot of practice on La Crosse Street, just south of Ball Market. So 47 years, I've made it almost as mine. That's not a problem. I live on the south side, of course, though, Area 1. I'm married. My wife, Vicki, is a speech pathologist in the school system in South Park. I have three children. McDougall is 22 at SDSU. High jumper, triple jumper for the school there. My senior son, 18-years-old, is at Central High School. My other sons are freshmen at high school. They're involved in sports. My 18-year-old gets his Vicki graduation this year, I'm told. Have a business and economics degree from the University of South Dakota. Law degree from the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. And I've been practicing here now for almost 21 years. I was the first lieutenant in the South Dakota Army National Guard. And, you know, I've always been interested in helping children. Whether it's taking neighborhood kids on their first deer hunt or coaching a new volunteer. I've always wanted to try to leave that footprint, if you will, to impress upon a child, to better himself. And that's what got me interested in the school board in the first place, three years ago. And I stand here today, and I'm eager to try to help make our children today college and career ready. I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Matt. And we'll turn to Rick Crevel.
Thank you, Dale. My beginning in my political career started when my children were in elementary school many, many years ago, 1993, at the old Valley View Elementary School. I was doing the PTA thing that many parents do when your children are in elementary school. And a speaker came to our PTA meeting one night, informed us about the fact that Rapid City had just changed from an all-at-large school board to a school board that would be represented by districts. She said it would be a shame if no one ran after all the effort to change the process. I didn't really want to run for the school board, but I gathered my 20 signatures, and my intention was to wait until the last day, and if anyone else turned in a petition, I wouldn't turn mine in. At 4:55 PM on Friday, the school business office, I was told nobody had turned in any petitions. Next day, in the Rapid City Journal, seven people vie for Area 7 seat on the school board.[292.02][292.02](Laughter) The joke is on me, and the rest is history. I was elected to the school board in 1994, served one term, serving as president my last year. A couple years later, I ran successfully for a city council seat and was fortunate enough to win elections for two terms there. I'm running for a seat on the school board because I believe we deserve better. Our children deserve a curriculum developed by educators instead of the political correctness police. I believe our parents deserve a school calendar that is sensitive to the needs of our community. The early release Wednesdays, inexcusable. Our teachers deserve fairness in their pay and to have a pay matrix that is followed. And our taxpayers deserve better than having additional tax placed on them without first having the funding formula fixed. Opting out before these things are addressed is like putting a Band-Aid on a broken arm. Thank you.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. And now our first question, because it's a fundamental question, we ask it again. What is the basis of your moral compass, and how will that influence what you decide is best for Rapid City? We'll begin with you, Rick Crevel.
Thank you, Dale, again. Genesis is my favorite book in the Bible. We need not look any farther than the story of creation. While I take the creation story literally, I believe it has a powerful allegorical aspect as well. The Garden of Eden was a perfect place, and yet in the middle of the garden was the tree of forbidden fruit. Adam and Eve were told not to even touch it lest they die. The story goes on to say that Satan said to Eve, "Did God really say?" "Did God really say?" This is the question everyone struggles with, from those considered lowest in our society to the ones in our society with great authority and power, and our government, and even our churches. Did God really say? I believe that in order to be free, we have to have a choice. If we have no choice, then we are not free. Therefore, when God placed the tree in the Garden of Eden, He gave us a choice. He was saying He wants us to be free. Our lives are just the same as Adam and Eve. We have a tree full of temptations that we have to deal with every day. How does this relate to government and my moral compass? It is necessary for there to be a tree. Therefore, it is not government's job to cut down all the trees and remove temptation from everyone's life and sterilize our garden. At the same time, it certainly is not the government's job to pick and sell the fruit. It's certainly not government's job to plant seeds to get more trees so that they can license and regulate and collect taxes on the sale of the fruit from forbidden fruit retailers. It's not government's job to make money from the fruit. My compass is simply this. What did God really say?
Thank you, Matt Stevens.
Thank you, Dale. We all know the golden rules. Treat others as you wish to be treated yourself. What better moral compass than that? But I might tweak that just a little, and that is, I think we each have an obligation to each other, not only to treat each other well, but to try to impart upon each other positive footprint. If we can each make each other a little bit better every time we interact with each other, isn't that really the ultimate moral compass? When we look at serving on the school board, we're looking at our stakeholders, our constituents, our children first, the students first. And every decision we make on the school board should first be about how do we help those students become lifelong learners and become quality educated. I try, we all have our fallibilities, I have no exception to that. But I try to impart upon that footprint upon everybody. We all know that person. You might bump into them at the mall or at the baseball field, and you might have a 30-second conversation with that person, shake his hand, share pleasantries, and when you part, you feel better about yourself. You know those people? That's what I aspire to be, and that's what I aspire to be to each and every student, because each and every student in our district deserves that.
Thank you, Matt. And now our second question. Matt, we're gonna begin with you with this question. What do you believe is the role of parents in education of their children?
Thank you. The role that parents play in educating the children is paramount. Let's not forget, who were the first teachers of each student in our district? Their parents. So why would we exclude them once they become of school age? The school should use every tool it has, every possibility to reach each child, and that means reaching out to each parent. Having been raised, I went to, I know I said this before, I went to Nobod North Junior High back when it was a junior high and Central High School. Statistics will bear this out, and that is that students' families in impoverished areas or entitled schools tend to be reluctant to reach out. They tend to be reluctant to step forward and engage the teacher, engage the school. And that is why it is incumbent upon the school district and the individual schools themselves to extend that branch first, to try to involve that parent, because together with the parents and the teachers, we can best reach those children. Ultimately, our goal should be to develop that strong teacher and family rapport that can nurture each student and help them reach their potential.
Thank you. And Rick Crevel, same question.
Thank you, Dale. Based on literally decades of research and observation, it is undisputed and beyond all doubt that parental involvement is key to the effectiveness of the education of our children. Being a parent myself, I consider parental rights hollow ground. If I am elected, I will make sure that policy decisions will always yield to parental rights and needs and not the other way around. I believe it's the job of the school board to make sure that the laws that they pass, let me start that over. I get tongue-tied when I try to say this. It's not the job of the school board to make sure that people and parents follow their laws. It's the school board's job to make sure that the laws serve people. That's about all I have to say on that.
Okay, thank you. And now we go to our closing thoughts, and Rick Crevel, you'll go first.
I want to express my gratitude to the FHA folks for supporting this forum. I want to thank those who are listening on the radio and those in attendance tonight for caring enough to want to know more about your candidates. I hope the questions that are asked and the answers that are given in the next few minutes will give you some idea. If they fail to do that, I think we all have some contact information to lay at your back. Feel free to help yourself to that and pursue your questions with me personally later. And I would be honored to visit with you later. Thank you.
Thank you. And Matt Stevens, you have the final word.
Thank you. I've alluded to this just earlier here. Since I moved back from Lincoln, Nebraska in 1994, I started my practice here in Rapid City where I'm from. I have coached baseball. I've coached flag football, springboard diving, soccer. I've led discussion leadership groups at North, South, and Central. I do this because I like to do it. It's a selfish, it's a selfish pleasure of mine, because I like to help students. I like to see them attain things and develop leadership, the confidence. And I think actions rather speak louder than words. I think I've demonstrated in my last three years on the board, the courage and fortitude to do what's necessary for the children. You know, this financial problem we've had in our school district has been here for some time. This isn't something that's new to us. This funding formula is not working, and this is the first board in Rapid City to finally ask for the opt-out, to stick their necks out and ask for that. And I am asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you think Matt's school board is saying what feedback is showing And now we're gonna turn our attention to Ward 7. Ward 7, there are two running for the school board seat there. Kate Thomas, the challenger, and the incumbent school board member, Laura Shad. Unfortunately, candidate Laura Shad could not be with us tonight. Kate Thomas is in the house, okay? If you'll kindly make your way to the podium there. And you have the floor yourself, Kate, if you'll begin with your opening statement.
Okay. Thank you for taking the time to come tonight and giving me this opportunity to talk. I am Kate Thomas. I'm running for District 7. I've lived here in Rapid City for over 30 years. The Air Force brought my family here. My dad was a captain. We, I've been to several different public schools and private here. Pine Dale Elementary when I was very little, Seton Homeschool, and then on to St. Thomas More. My husband and I have been married almost 18 years this end of May. He and I built a house out in Rapid Valley together. It took a while, but we both did it. We have seven children together, one in college in Lincoln Tech and in Denver, Colorado. I have two at Central, one at East. The three bottom I homeschool exclusively. I also do homeschool dual-enroll the top three. So I have some of them at home, and then the bottom ones all at home. They've had difficulties with dyslexia in this school system and the Common Core math, and so that's why I've taken them out of that and do that part at home. But I do love the science arts orchestra teachers, so I use those for that. I'm a gardener, runner. I volunteer with my kids' stuff. As you can just say that I am CEO of Thomas Productions. And I think that I can be a voice for the parents like myself.
Thank you, Kate. And your first question, what is the basis of your moral compass, and how will that influence what you decide is best for Rapid City?
My basis for my moral compass is Jesus. I may not always act like it, but if I pray every day, that sent was me back to Him. Without Him, I can't do anything, but all things are possible with Him. When I started thinking about running for this, I thought, it's His will, no matter what happens in the end. But I thought maybe I wouldn't have the energy to beat so many people, and I thought I would have to fake happiness, because I'm tired all the time. But I found that coming back to Him and thinking about Him every day, that His one commandment, to love your neighbor as yourself, if you do tend to try to think of everybody like that, I found that He fills me back up with the energy to do that instead of takes it away. And I hope that this habit will go with me for the rest of my life, school board or not, and that I can see parents and teachers in that same light of loving them as my neighbor.
Thank you very much. And your next question, what do you believe is the role of parents in the education of their children?
It's essential. It's the most important rule. Education does not just encompass reading and writing or math. It's physical, it's thinking, and it's emotional and spiritual. You are the first thing that they see, whether if you're an adopted parent or one single parent or both parents. You are the only one that is going to love your child as much, more than anybody else in the world. And so your education to them is everything you teach them every day. Just because they walk out the door and go to school does not mean that ends. And when they come back, you start up again. It's all day long. So it's essential that parents are very involved in their education at school as well.
Thank you, Kate. And Kate, closing thoughts, please.
I'm running because I'm done complaining about not being heard and treated as if I don't know what's good for my kids. Mostly because I think that the Common Core is failing, not just our teachers, but our kids. And the school board has the right to take that in, put it in, and take it out. I've seen kids cry over the testing. There's too much testing, and I've seen teachers, I've talked to them, parent-teacher conferences. They don't like it.[1155.83][1155.83](Applause) I would just like to be the voice for those teachers and those parents.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's say a few comments. And now, if I could hand this microphone to you, Matt, and Rick, if you wouldn't mind grabbing that microphone there. Let me ask you just a few questions in our little living room up here tonight. So let's begin. Kate, you just brought up the issue of Common Core. So this question is a hot burner, front burner question. You don't have to follow the state legislature very closely to know that it's not one bill proposed on Common Core, but multiple bills. And so it is a very important question to our constituents as well. So here's the question. What in your view regarding the continued use of Common Core standards in Rapid... What, excuse me. What is your view regarding the continued use of Common Core standards in the Rapid City area schools?
I think the continued use would fail our teachers and our students. It's just gonna fail.
Everybody say a question? I've never understood the educational bureaucracy that insists every year to change. Every three or four years, there's a new program, there's a new set of books. It's just a constant, it's a money pit. We're just buying into the fact that somebody has, thinks they're climbing some social ladder in some Ivy League school, and they say, well, you know what? You know, what do you teach? How much has what we teach first graders changed in 200 years? They need to learn letters. They need to learn numbers. One plus one is two. How difficult can that be? Do we have to really... I'm getting flagged. I don't like it.
Matt, any thoughts on Common Core standards or continued use of that?
I know it's gonna take me 10 minutes to even start touching that question. There's more information out there about what Common Core is than what it is. This is the first year we're doing the Smarter Balance testing, so we really don't know what the result's gonna be there. But I'll tell you this, the goals of the Common Core, and I could duck this question easy, I could tell you that it's out of our hands, legislature's passed this on to us and we have to do it, so there we are. But when you look at the actual Common Core standards, they're trying to make our children more analytical, more able to value and weigh evidence, better citizens. I'm getting flagged, but I could go on and on on this. Thank you.
Any additional thoughts on the Common Core standards? Okay, next question. Should nurses, counselors, or teachers be allowed to distribute contraception information or make referrals to students regarding clinics without parental knowledge?
No. I've kind of dealt with that myself several times with my own kids. I think that if they are concerned with a particular child that they think needs to know, they have to come to the parent and ask them. It is not any right of freedom of theirs to talk with any other student or child other than their own.
Absolutely not. Well, as I understand it right now, it's very, it's a very limited, I forget, one year maybe in grade school where it's touched upon. It's not touched upon about disseminating materials like that, I understand. The fact is, the children here on the playgrounds, they are educated themselves, they educate themselves. I don't know that the school doing anything changes that at all.
Let me ask this question. And Matt, you've touched on this already. You mentioned the opt-out, and that's on everybody's mind. We'll have an opportunity to vote on the opt-out come June the 2nd. The question is, do you oppose or support the Rapid City, the school districts opting out of property tax limits, and why?
Well, I voted for it, along with my other six members of the board. I voted for it because in three years, we're gonna have spent through, we will have spent through our reserve. We'll be out of money, we're losing teachers because we can't afford to pay them. Mr. Peabody, I know, is going to advocate for suing the state government. That's at least a 10-year proposition if we are successful on that. We're gonna be out of our reserve in three years. If we want to keep teachers here that are good teachers and not let them go to Wyoming or Douglas or Hill City, we have to start paying them at competitive levels. And you know what? We can do that just to do that.
So before I let you both answer, if you so desire to do so, when you say in three years, we'll be out of, our reserves will be depleted, if the community votes for the opt-out on June the 2nd, when does that take place? When does that kick in?
Well, there is a one-year delay. One year of collecting revenues, so it would be the following fall, the fall of 60, 70.
And what kind of funds are we looking at here?
Well, we've asked for $6 million over five years. Each year for five years.
What kind of burden will that be for the taxpayer?
That's a good question. And especially for most of us are personal residents, owners here, so it breaks down to $12 a year per $100,000 of property value per $1 million of opt-out. So let's say you have a $200,000 home. That's two times 12 is 24, times the $6 million is $144 per year, which is $12 a month. So with a $6 million opt-out, it would cost average taxpayer who has a $200,000 home an additional $12 per month.
Okay. Any other comments on this?
Boy, now I'm in the position of having 10 minutes worth of information to say in one minute. Just let me tell you this, you know, folks, there's a, the Department of Education has a website, and there's a link there called Statistical Digest. And if you would look at Rapid City and Sioux Falls from 2004, and then look at Rapid City's numbers in 2014, you'll see the capital A taxes for Sioux Falls went up 59% in 10 years, and Rapid City's went up 130. That's the funding formula. If you look in there, when you consider that Sioux Falls is growing like twice as fast as us in building permits, we bragged about $100 million, $150 million a year, or break to $200 million. Sioux Falls had $100 million a month last month, but our taxes are going up faster. The formula is broke. You can do the opt-out. I understand you can, and it will give some relief, but I'm gonna tell you what, the arm is still broken at the end of the day.
I would say that I don't support it, and I can only attest to my own personal life, which is that most years, in the 10 years that my husband and I built our house, the assessments have gone up 2% to 3%, we expect something. But water, you know, fire department, all of that seems to go up $1, $2. School district, a couple hundred, they seem to be the ones getting that, and I understand that. But this year, my house assessment's gone up 5. I know two neighbors across the place, it's gone up 9% and 10%. I heard someone had like 49%. I'm hoping that's a mistake. My husband took a pay cut of $800 a month. He's on self-employment, so we're bringing in $5,000 minus $800, so that he could be home with the kids on the weekends. I'm supposed to now cut out another $150. I don't know where to find that at, although my husband did quit smoking, so there's about 300 right there.
Okay. So let me ask this of you, Matt. If the community, and it was remarkable that, I think, two groups pulled these signatures together in a relatively quick fashion to put it on, to put on the ballot. If the community votes no on June 2nd, surely the school board's been thinking about backup plan in case that happens?
Well, the obvious solution is we try again. Sometimes it takes districts multiple times to get it, to get it passed. I'm not saying that's necessarily what we would do, but that, we're at a place where, and I'd agree with Rick, the funding formula is broken. Suing the state right now might be a plan, but it doesn't provide fruitful results anytime soon. So I'm not sure where we go from there. We end up cutting. It's like we did last fall. We probably end up cutting more programs, more FTEs, and we don't give more salary increases or benefit increases, and we lose more teachers.
Okay. I want to move on to our last question. I think we have time for it, do we not? Okay, our last question. Explain, explain your opinions about the homeschool alternative to education, either positive or negative. How do you feel about homeschool?
Well, I think it can be a positive thing if the parents that are homeschooling are seeking out the appropriate curriculum and are capable themselves of teaching their students. In Rapid City, I understand it's a little loose, and that concerns me because we're graduating, or I shouldn't say graduating, but we're advancing students potentially who have an inferior education, and those are our future citizens and future draws on our society if they can't provide and reproduce themselves.
Any comments?
Yes, I certainly, you know, if you advocate for parental rights, obviously you would support homeschool and the things that the parents want to do. And just to jump back to your last question if I could just for a second, I do, as far as the general fund for Rapid City, I have a chart on my table back there that shows the change in dollars for all 166 school districts as a five-year period from 1992 to 2004. Check it out. Thank you.
Obviously, I like homeschooling. Obviously, I like homeschooling. I think I'm quite capable of teaching my kids. I got one in college that I graduated myself. I know several families that have. Again, parental rights. I don't think it's anybody's business to get into somebody else's home and say, "No, you can't," because I don't think you have the right curriculum. You'd be too much policing.
Okay. We applaud the efforts of our school board candidates. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we have one last segment, and that's with our mayoral candidates, but before they come up, we want to ask if there are any other candidates in the House running for any other, from another county. We have several in the House, and we want to recognize them, and we want to, would they please come forward? Will you please congratulate these who are stepping up to serve as a candidate in other counties? Okay, somebody's taking this real seriously. Any other candidates, any other candidates in the House? Okay? No other candidates? Okay, we'd like to begin. These are candidates. If you'll introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're running for and where.
I need to hire them. I'm Dr. Golden Rice, and I moved to Meade County a year ago. I was in Rapid City School District before then. We have eight children, and we've been married 34 years. I know what you're thinking, did you get married when you was 10? No. So we have our last daughters going to Stevens High School, but I do, I have, well, we started a group, I started a group, called Citizens for Academic Transparency right here in Rapid City. We, along with Taunche Weaver, helped get this opt-out to vote to the ballot. And we do have, I don't want to take too much time, but go to our website, we have a website, Citizens for Academic Transparency. It's my second parents' group that I started, and we are an advocate for parental rights. I've been doing this for about 15 years, so I figured it was time for me to sit on the school board and be that go-between between parents and administration teachers. Thank you.
So it's Meade County?
Meade County, yes, thank you.
Okay. Matt?
Hi, I am Shelley Grenager. I am a current school board member at the Meade County School Board. My husband and I, more importantly, are members at Fountain Springs Community Church along with my, our children, Olivia, who's our 11-year-old, Isabel, our seven-year-old, and Ian, our nine-year-old. I jotted down a few notes so I wouldn't forget something. But while being on the school board, I have seen some, a lot of great things. Our school has great teachers and a caring staff, and I disagree with a Rapid City school board member because Meade County, we are in the black. We plan on staying in the black while giving our teachers the raises that they deserve where we can find money, we can find that. I've also seen some troubling things in Meade County, some of things like the implementation of Common Core standards. These are a lot more than just standards, so don't be fooled. Get educated. I've also seen Meade County switch to investigative math. This is a math that they switched to to prepare our students for the Smarter Balance Test. It is math riddled with problems, and it's a lower-quality education that they're getting. They take those standardized tests, they spend eight to 10 hours a year. The time could be better served educating those students, not testing them. I'm running again this time to continue to protect parents' rights, push for higher-quality curriculum, support our teachers, but most of all, to take back local control to our school board. I have one last question, I know it runs over my time. I know most of you are in the Rapid City School District, but you've got friends and family in our Meade School District. I ask that you pass on my name, and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
And Shelley, do you have the support of your family, especially your children?
I do.
Okay, very good. And please introduce yourself.
Oh, thank you. My name is Michael Brown. I am a husband of 16 years to my wife, Lori, and I have two kids in Piedmont Valley Elementary. I am running for Meade County School Board, and as soon as, I am locally educated, secondary education here in the South Dakota School Lines Technology, and born and raised in Wyoming, and came here for the school, and loved it in the States since. I am running for Meade County School Board for the simplest reason, I just really want to be involved in the decisions that come and go into our children and their futures. A few of the items I am really concerned about is we've got, I'm very concerned about the nationalization of the standardized testing programs. We need to get it out of the federal hands and back into our hands. I also believe that parents' rights are very important. We have the right to teach our children as parents, and I don't believe the school system should allow, should be allowed to teach contrary values. Just because we trust the school with our children's education doesn't mean we have to give up our rights. And I am a big advocate in Piedmont Valley that we are outgrowing our school, we need to get a middle school up, and to alleviate the already crowding that is in the brand-new elementary school. And so if we build on, it's, our area's growing big, and we have to, they have to, we have to grow along with it. Thank you so much for your time. Please look at my information in the back. Thank you again. God bless.
All right. Let's thank the two candidates running our school board. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.